Good afternoon, this is me, Dassan, through Ukrainian Odesa. You can watch us online on YouTube and on Facebook in both languages, Ukrainian and English. And you can also ask your questions online, just scan the QR code that you can now see on the screen to ask your questions. Our first briefing is dedicated today as to the state of architectural monuments in the UNESCO area in Odesa. And usually we do not cover the internal municipal cases, but UNESCO, Odesa got, some of the territories of Odesa, areas of Odesa got UNESCO status. This is the center of the city. And today we would like to discuss the FUK house, which is near the municipal council of Odesa in the 13 Primorskyy boulevard. This monument has a status of the National Architectural Monument. And unfortunately, we have with us only Olga Kvasnitska, the deputy of, the people's deputy of Odesa City Council. We tried to invite the representatives of the municipal council, council of the regional council and the department dealing with the protection of the cultural monuments, but the head of the deputy is on a business trip. And on the 15th of November, there was the commission checking the state of the mentioned house, but unfortunately, the results have not been yet disclosed. And the representatives of the municipal council also refused to visit us, saying that this is the task of the regional authorities. We also wanted to invite here Mr. Vitniansky, who was the ambassador saying that the center of Odesa should become the part of UNESCO area. We also, but unfortunately, he cannot come today. We also invited the development company Grad Invest, who since 2005, 2006 had the permission to reconstruct the house and the latest, but unfortunately, the representatives of the company said to us that the lawyer that who usually speaks to journalists is on a sick leave, that's why he cannot be here as well. So I would like to give floor to Olga Kvasnitska. Thank you very much for just taking this burden to report about the condition of this house. Thank you very much and I'm thank you for raising this important topic. And this is important not only for Odesa, but also for the whole of Ukraine, because this is the task of the state and the local authorities and every citizen. And I always say that we are happy to live in the city, it was the heritage of the whole of several generations. That's why I'm trying to identify such architectural monuments to make them be included into the state registers for the developers, not to destroy our monuments, our landmarks. And you're right when you say that despite the fact that we prepared, it took longest time for us to prepare the dossier for UNESCO, with the start of the full-scale invasion, with the massive missile attacks, the decision was made that we should have the support of international institutions, thank to the First Lady, to the President, to the Ministry of Culture. We were, in the long run, received the UNESCO status and we now have the support. But this is the support of international institutions, but this doesn't mean that they will solve the preservation of our landmarks. But today, I would not, not only like to cover the House of FUK, but also the House of Wagner, which is next to the House of FUK. And because the owner fails to fulfill all the requirements and international rules, and also our authorities should protect the architectural monuments and should support owners in preserving these landmarks and these architectural monuments. And if the owners fail to do this, the authorities should be involved in the process. We have two historical areas, the Francouski boulevard, which has been almost fully destroyed by developers, we have also the central historical area and the buffer zone. And you're right when you say that we should take care about our monuments and landmarks. And we should understand that the restoration process is now more complicated because of the permissions. That's why we need to make amendments to the master plan, to the zoning plan, and this is a very difficult task that no one fulfills now. As for the FUK house, I can say that this is now in a devastating condition. We have shot a video, you can watch it on my Facebook page, proof that the house is almost completely destroyed. There are no conservation measures taken. And if the owner says about possible reconstruction and has a permission for such reconstruction, although I don't have such information because the design documentation has not undergone any scrutiny, but in any case, the conservation should be introduced, but this is not the case. And we have the next problem. This is the flooding of the house next to the House of FUK. This is the House of Wagner. The residence of the House of Wagner, that has three statuses, the National Architectural Monument, Local Architectural Monument, etc., is also in a bad condition. And you, we have the local program to support architectural monuments, and that house was added to the list, but then it was somehow excluded, and no fines have been provided to restore that house. And tomorrow, we will see the decision of the Executive Commission making it obligatory for the condominium of that house to carry out emergency work because of the bad condition of the house. And why do we need such an institution protecting architectural monuments? What do you mean by the institution? Can you name it? This is the Department of Cultural Heritage of the municipal council, the departments of the region and the Ministry of Culture. These institutions are responsible for the two architectural monuments. This is not only about FUK or the House of Wagner, but this is actually about all of the houses which are under the responsibility of the mentioned institutions. But de facto, everything is being destroyed. There is no response of the institutions. The Ministry of Culture has no orders to bring the House of FUK to the relevant condition. Several years ago, that was the court proceedings of the Ministry of Culture against the House of FUK, and the owners of the House of FUK won that case. And they will win all the time because of the caps of the legal framework. That was the same as it was with the Fesenka Publishing House. On the 15th of November, the regional department conducted the scrutiny of the house. Have you seen the result and why such examination was organized? We, the residents of the House of Wagner and also the regional municipal departments responsible for preservation of the cultural heritage, which is also in the buffer UNESCO zone, had to enter that house to, and also to conduct the scrutiny of the House of Wagner as required by the city. And before the 15th of November, there was no examination conducted because we were not allowed, but we managed to do that on the 15th of November, but without representatives of the city, and I could not get there as well. And because the lawyers of the owners said that only the representatives of regional department could enter with them, that's, and we could not receive the results of that examination. And I would like to address the relevant law enforcement bodies, because there is no proper functioning of the owner. There are two houses, the House of FUK and the House of Wagner. And you say that because the owner of the House of FUK failed to conduct conservation and restoration of the House of FUK, it has a negative impact on the House of Wagner. And it is planned that tomorrow, at the Executive Commission of the Municipal Council, the decision will be made that the House of Wagner is an emergency state. What will be the result? That will be a precedent, because a lot of houses in Odesa are in such poor technical condition. And this will be the precedent for all owners of these architectural monuments to take measures as soon as possible to preserve the houses. But again, this is a hoax, because what is meant by as soon as possible? Because it takes time to get permissions for such activities to be conducted on the side of the houses in bad conditions. So actually, the regional and municipal departments should be responsible for that, but instead of that, they put this burden on the shoulders of the residents of the houses, which are architectural monuments, and for them, it is financially impossible to restore the houses. And what is the status of the House of Wagner? It has the status of the local national significance, so we should also refer to the Ministry of Culture. But these two objects, houses, are in the buffer zone, in the zone of UNESCO, and we also need to get recommendation from UNESCO. And this is, will only delay the process because of the bureaucracy. And the houses of Wagner are ready to restore the house, but it is impossible to do that because we cannot get all the permissions. And so I offered just to make, organize a meeting of how to restore the house as soon as possible, involving the representatives from the national and local level. And we can ask the representatives of the House of Wagner if they are ready or not ready. And my question is the following: as soon as I remember, the house is in the ownership of the residents, because they have a condominium. Even if there is no condominium, by the decision of the Supreme Court, the residents are responsible for their house. So, and the burden is on their shoulders, as on the company of the Grad Invest. And they need to preserve the state, the condition of the house as it was when they got the house. The restoration of the architectural monuments is very expensive from the financial point of view, let alone the obtaining of all the permissions. And the law clearly envisages that if the residents cannot do that by their own, the government authorities should find ways to support them. There are national and local programs for that, but unfortunately, this progress don't help us to preserve all the houses. There are also grant programs, but unfortunately, Odesa failed to participate in these programs. And now we have the full-scale invasion and such cooperation is next to impossible. And for example, the missile attack in the Wyskowy descent, 18, the house was destroyed there, but it is, there is still no conservation conducted. All the such cases envisage the shortened procedure, no additional permissions should be got. This is the house that is under the House of Scientists. It is almost destroyed by a missile. But nowadays, we don't even know who will be the contractor and who will finance the process to conserve that house. And the winter is coming, there are heavy rains, and we can see how different houses are being destroyed, including that house that was hit by a missile under the House of Scientists in 18 Wyskowy, Uzwi. And are there any changes in the rules after Odesa just obtained the UNESCO status? So you need to receive the permission from the Ministry of Culture and also from UNESCO? Actually, the officials of our institutions and departments should answer the question because they are in direct contact with UNESCO, and they should raise awareness about how the process should be organized. If this is a national monument, if it's not of the National Architectural Monument, a local architectural monument, and if this is in a buffer zone, but the borders of the buffer zone has not been approved yet, it should be in winter and spring, who is responsible for that? The Ministry of Culture, following the recommendations of UNESCO. But we don't have these borders, but when you are in a buffer zone, to receive the restoration permission, you should also receive the recommendation from UNESCO. And through the diplomatic corps, through the Ministry of Culture, such recommendations should be provided, and only after obtaining them, we can start the work. But we have not had such cases yet, yes, of course. And now we have the case with the House of Wagner, where the condominium is obliged to undertake emergency measures. And this means that we need to develop the documentation to coordinate everything with the Ministry of Culture and to receive recommendations from UNESCO. And we have the question online. And who is the author of the question? Could you please specify it?
This question, you should ask this the director of the Department of the Protection of the Cultural Heritage. What is the general situation with architectural monuments in the UNESCO zone? It is terrible. And it is not related even to the massive missile attacks of the Russian Federation, which is an aggressor country, a terrorist state. But this is because of the fact that over the last years, we have become witnesses of the total failure to fulfill the law on the protection of the cultural heritage by the owners of the architectural monuments. I believe that this is a failure, because we don't have the efficient program and we won't have in the nearest future, because everyone is focused on the frontline. And we have failed to start the grant programs. We have not even developed the rules of behavior in the historical zone for owners, for students, for ordinary people to understand what can be done and what cannot be done in those architectural monuments. We don't have the algorithm, the algorithm, the procedure to preserve the monuments. There is the Heritage Protection Legislation that envisages the rules of the behavior of common people. But I'm not talking about legislation, I'm talking about the awareness-raising campaign. In Lviv, they developed such rules with GIZ, and I've been asking for the same since 2014, and of course, we cannot find money for that now. But even at the Congress of the local councils was announced that. Do you have any information about how many houses in the UNESCO zone are in emergency condition? I have not calculated that if there will be a request from the society, I will be able to ask this question from the relevant institutions.
And unfortunately, the lawyer could not join us today. Please remain in your seat, thank you. Just introduce yourself and as far as understand that you live in Wagner House, and so the floor is yours. Yes, I live there, in Wagner House. What is your name? Olena Yagnotenko, Olena. Thank you. And this story started in 2019, and for almost two years, we have been struggling. And we don't understand what is the reason for these barriers, but I know that our issue will be discussed at the executive, at the meeting of the Executive Commission. But we now have the private ownership because we are condominium, and the Executive Commission cannot now make decisions with such cases, because this is now the issue of architectural monuments. So it is not legal for the Executive Committee to discuss it. So please let it alone, and I will just ask questions. What has been done in your house for the last decade? This is the first question. And the second question. When did you notice that the condition of the FUK house affects the condition of your house? As for example, for my apartment and the apartments of other residents of the house? And for example, the restoration repairs, like, was conducted 20 years ago. We have a neighbor from the fourth floor who had renovations two years ago, so the apartment is in ideal condition. What is the condition of the house? No, I just want to explain that we do everything by our own. From 1979, no repair has been conducted by the, by authorities. I'm not talking about your apartments, about any activities to strengthen the house, no, since 1979. We tried to have our roof repaired, but... They, they, and we had the contractor, but we received the document saying that we are now in the queue for these repairs, and they did not allow us to do that by our own. So we cannot do anything. And do you want to add something? No. Thank you. Like, it's a pity that we can't have the lawyer. So till we are waiting for the lawyer, and so, so there has been no restoration since And no one was able to allocate funds. And do you remember that that was the part of the program of the national importance? I just wanted to understand what the residents of the house did, and perhaps the lawyer will be able to share more information. What efforts have been taken? This is not about the repairs in a separate apartment. This is just about the responsibility of owners of the house to preserve the specific condition of the house. And so the agreement has not been signed with the balance owner, and no protection agreement has been signed, and he has the whole mess with the register of such permissions. And if you remember, if Odesa residents remember, in 2018, we sent the petition to Mr. Stepanov, who is the head of the regional administration, and we just wanted to ask for the clear procedure of how to deal with these situations. And unfortunately, nothing has been done since, and when it comes about the changes to the legislation, the, the developing of the cities, the new legislation shall take into consideration the situation. So on the one hand, we have legislation protecting heritage and landmarks, saying that there are some departments responsible, and on the other hand, we have the legislation regulating the right of ownership. And under such legislation, the owner cannot allow the representatives of authorities to enter such houses. I have a question. You say that tomorrow, the Executive Commission are going to make a decision saying that the work should be started right away. And is this a legal category? And then what does it mean, "right away"? This means that in the nearest future, but this is not realistic, because we have a long procedure that I have just described. So the lawyer has joined us today, the lawyer of the residence of the house, under discussion. Please don't forget to introduce yourself, and can you share the legal point of view? My name is Denis Reженko, I'm a lawyer, and I would like to share more details about the legal aspects. What is surprising here and what proves that no good governance is performed here? In 2019, the program on restoration/reconstruction of the historical part of the city, and according to the passport of the program, four houses, including the house in Chakovskaya street and others, were included in the program. There were several changes to the program, and by the last, the sixth update, the budget was expanded to 360 million hryvnes. The next program, it was approved by the Executive Committee for 2022, 2024, and no, just money was provided, but I think, and in the past, the money was provided. Was any work done there in the framework of the program? No. We referred to the capital construction department, and they told us that they did not have enough money. When the program was approved for 2022, 2024, our house was not included. On the 19th of July, the amendments were made to the program, covering two houses in 12 and 14 Chakovskaya lane. And in, as for the House FUK and the House of FUK, there are no changes, but let's come back to your house, the House of Wagner, because you're the resident of the house. And it was, and now they want, the Executive Committee wants to make the decision, which is out of the area of responsibility of that... which is out of the area of responsibility of that commission. And because when it comes to sanitary issues, and it cannot be done for condominiums. And we have a condominium. And the house has been taken from the balance of the responsible authority on the first June this year. And the Executive Committee cannot make decision with regard to private residential fund. And this is, such decision is impossible. When the condominium was created? It was created on the first of June twenty twenty-three. Do you have any information about why condominium was not created before that? Because we know about the quality of services provided by the ruling authority. And the residents make a decision to establish condominium. As soon as they were ready, they just organized it. And I asked that question to the resident of the house. Do you have information about when the condition of Fook House started critically affect the house of Wagner? As far as I know, the documentation of the condition of the house and we can see the gradual deterioration of the technical condition that started in nineteen ninety. And despite the numerous addresses and requests of the residents of the house, nothing was done to change the situation. No money was provided to restore the houses in two, four Chaykovsky Lane. Have you tried to refer to the representatives of the Grant and Wes Company? Yes, and the last time, they invited us to see the condition of the house by the regional department dealing with the cultural heritage. And that was the first time when we talked to them. And when we tried to have a look at the wall of our house, which is in a bad condition, the guard did not allow us to do that, the guard of the next house. But last week, they allowed us to enter. And we need to have the more in-depth investigation of the issue. Were you there together with the inspector of the Architectural Monuments Protection Department? Yes, and this is the first time they allowed us to go there. And perhaps this can be explained by our address to the Verkhovn Rada. And we received the control answer on the sixteenth. We talked, discussed that issue with the lawyer of the Primorskya Administration, but he was very rude to me. He asked me and he was, how we are going to improve the situation? He was really very nervous. But perhaps it has affected the situation house. And the attempt of the department to enter there failed. And I talked by telephone with the representatives, with the lawyer. And they just emphasized that they don't want to go. Thank you. Thank you for the information from your such report. And we're limited in time, so we need to stop here. If you want to add something, Olga, the floor is yours. We need to start communication. If you will continue inviting representatives of the regional and municipal authorities and they will fail to come, it will not be, we will not be able to preserve our architectural monuments. Thank you. We will stop here. And I would like to say that we really invited the representatives of the regional municipal authorities. And if they want to express their position and if the owner wants to come here because the owner has a part to play here, we will provide the possibility for them to answer our questions. The next briefing will be at noon. It will be dedicated to the violation of human rights on the territories of Ukraine and where they're occupied by the Russian Federation. Please stay tuned.